Seven o'clock, we'll get started. I'd like to let everybody know that Item 1T 4600 cheering Cross Road has been postponed to a future date, and we will not be considering that item tonight. So that's 1T 4600 cheering Cross. So let's all rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome to the Bloomfield Township Zoning Board of Appeals meeting of August 13th, 2024. As a brief introduction, the Zoning Board of Appeals is a seven-member quasi-judicial body appointed by the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees per the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. Matters pending before the Zoning Board of Appeals are decided on a case-by-case basis. Any appeal of a decision made by the Zoning Board of Appeals is subject to Circuit Court review. Each case will be called separately in the order shown on tonight's agenda. There will be an opportunity for public comment at one point during each case. All persons wishing to comment will be asked to provide their name and address at the podium. Address your comments to the board and not the applicant or other members of the public. Given the number of appeals tonight, please make your comments brief. Comments by the Neighborhood Association will be considered as part of the factual information presented to the board, but those comments are not the determining factor for approval or denial. Please confine comments to the specific request before the board. For requests to be successful, an affirmative vote of at least four members present is required. We hope this provides a better understanding of what you can expect at tonight's meeting. So let's take attendance.
So noted.
And then I'll need a motion to approve or amend the minutes of the July 9th meeting.
I would move to approve the July 9th, 2024 minutes. Support.
I have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The minutes are approved. So let's call the first item, which would be Item 2T 2599 Warwick. Is the applicant?
I would move to remove this from the table. Take this off the table.
Support.
So we have a motion and support to remove this from the table. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It's removed from the table, and the applicant is ready.
What is that, removed from the table?
So it was tabled, and we just put it back on the agenda.
Oh, got it, okay.
I'm sorry, that's not an actual table.
Right, right. No, I got that, I was just a little confused for a moment, sorry.
Okay. That's poor wording on my part, it's not your fault. So could you tell us why you need a variance?
Yes, we're looking for a variance due to several factors in our backyard. As you can see from the picture, we do have a sunroom off the back of the yard. Immediately adjacent to that, which would be immediately due west, we have our septic. Within the septic is our field, so the field does go out another 12 to 15 feet. On the backside of the property, on the north corner and south corner are also telephone poles. At this point, we determined, looking at all those factors, the safest place to put the shed would be where the red is. It is hidden from street view currently by arborvitae that are mature, that are 15 to 18 feet high. We do have currently bushes and other natural vegetation between our property and the other property. It is within the encroachment of the 16 feet, so it would be the 12 feet encroachment, so we're requesting the variance of that encroachment. We also have had a conversation and have agreed with our neighbor due east and west to also put up additional arborvitae should the need arise if it's not completely hidden with the vegetation there.
So I remember when this came before us, when we tabled, there was some
Yes.
...comment from the HOA. Have you discussed this location with the HOA?
There have been several people that have stopped by. We have showed them where we intended to put the shed. To my knowledge, there has not been an issue. We do have agreements from either neighbors on either side of us and across the street. No one has brought it to our attention.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the arborvitae does not screen, will not screen the structure from the street view, the end of the driveway?
It does. If you go to another picture, if she goes to a subsequent picture, you can see it from the street view, you will not be able to see that. The arborvitae are mature, they are 18 feet high, or...
We did get a copy of this, just so you know.
What's that?
Yeah, because you can't tell by these pictures.
That's what the board has, that's why they're asking.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we, can we go to another picture?
Sure.
Okay. So that's, well, if we go back one, that will be the color of the shed, so it will be that actual shed. The shed being dark in color will also kind of meld with the vegetation. Our house is white with a slight gray trim and also slight gray shutter, so it complements the house, but in a reverse. That will be hidden behind the arborvitae, the next one. So from the street view, it's marked in red, that's the arborvitae right there.
Any other questions from the board? So I'll open this up to the public. Is anyone here like to comment? Could step forward, give us your name and address.
Hi, Mr. Katz.
I'm Joe Katz, I'm on the board of the Homeowners Association. Our only interest, and I imagine you share it, is that there are arborvitae's between the shed and the neighbor, and that the arborvitae's do not interfere with the tree that is on the neighbor's property. That's all we have to say.
So anyone else would like to speak on this item? So I'll close the public comment. Would you like to respond to the...
Oh, I mean, in light of that, we would do miniature arborvitae. We would then complement that, and then add to that slow-growing.
So it would have to be screened to the height of the structure at the time?
Right. I mean, you can buy eight-foot arborvitae.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Any other discussion from the board, or thoughts?
So, well, just based on the letter from the Hugo Hills Improvement Association, it seems to suggest that there is some room to move it closer to the patio. They reference abutting the applicant's existing patio. So is it possible? I mean, because that's quite an encroachment that you're asking for, and I understand the septic, and I understand typically I would be very, very opposed to this, but also considering it's a shed, you're not, people are not necessarily hanging out in a shed, so...
Yes, agreed. Because we don't know the extent of the field with our septic, we are concerned, our understanding when we purchased the home, that the field was out 20 to 30 feet. If we took that 20 to 30 feet, that's where we placed the shed.
Okay.
Only because there was repairs done to the field just prior to us buying the house, that's why we're aware of that.
Okay, and I guess it might be hard to, you know, to enforce this in a motion, but what I would prefer is, I understand why you are requesting the amount that you're asking for, because you need some room to work if you get out there.
Right, so could we then, you know, shift it two more feet towards the patio?
Yes, I mean, that would...
We're amenable to that.
Okay. So how much do you think you could move it in and still be able to do?
Probably two feet.
Okay.
From where the patio is to where we have the current shed, we have it measured out. It is...
So instead of encroaching 12 feet, you're suggesting it could be 10?
Correct.
Encroaching 10 feet, okay. Okay.
It looks like the HOA is recommending you rotate it.
Yeah.
If we wrote, that's the first I've heard of that. No one has a...
Save another four feet.
Huh?
It'll save another four feet if you rotate it.
I think that's actually the letter that they just handed you. If you look at the last two paragraphs of that letter, that's where the suggestion is coming from.
I guess it's like scribbled.
Is there a reason the Homeowners Association didn't provide this with us? I mean, this has been on the docket for two months, I'm just now hearing of this. I mean, in fair consideration, you know, this has been postponed since June 18th, and we're now just getting the letter, in fair consideration.
So I typically don't do that, but can you give us an explanation for that, then?
The board itself hasn't taken a position on this. This was gathered, filed by the president some days ago. I see. Position of the board. My understanding, the last time the board discussed it, was the two points that I was...
Gotcha.
So this is actually just from the president, not from the board?
That's, that's what we just heard.
My understanding, if I'm not mistaken, having been part of an organization like this, it would have to be board approval, not just one person making a decision, correct?
Well, for the HOA, we would just take what they say into consideration, but they, we're not bound by anything of your HOA, so it's just the township ordinances, and then we can grant a variance for those ordinances or not. So, I mean, with all things considered, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Go right ahead, I'm sure you've balanced all of the factors that are involved here equitably.
I have, I certainly have. Okay, so with regard to the appeal, I'm going to start with the permission request at 2599 Warwick Drive. I'm going to move that the request be approved, yes submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards, because the use of the accessory structure will not hinder or discourage the adjacent use of property due to the fact that it is going to be fully screened from public view, and I will also note that these accessory structures are becoming more common in the township and are appropriate to this neighborhood. With regard to the dimensional variance at 2599 Warwick Drive, I'm going to move that that also be approved, although not as requested, because the 12 feet was requested, I'm going to move that we approve at 10 feet.
Okay.
And with regard to that variance, the applicant has demonstrated all the standards for practical difficulty because the compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance is unduly burdensome because of the septic field that is on the home and obviously taking up a lot of the backyard there. There is no injustice to adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that this shed is going to be screened, and considering the uses of the shed, it's not against something that we're going to be entertaining or having people congregating near there. The unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, again, given the location of the septic fields in the back, and this is not self-created due to the reasons stated above. I will just add that you have to get all of your permits within one year and obtain them prior to construction, and as has already been discussed, and, you know, ad nauseam, but I have to say it for the motion, it does have to be screened fully, and the plantings will have to meet or exceed the height of the shed at the time of planting.
Understood. Support.
So I have a motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, your request, as modified, has been granted.
Thank you. Have a good night.
So, would anyone like to make a motion to remove Item 3T?
I would move to remove that from the table. Support.
A motion and support to put Item 3T on tonight's agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item's on the agenda, and I see the applicants here for 835 Harsdale. Could you share with us the...
Yes, Matt Mojo, representing the homeowners of 835 Harsdale. This case came before you a month or so ago, and there was some question about the location of the proposed garden shed. Based on the feedback that we received from the board, we worked with the Homeowners Association and moved the shed back quite a bit toward the rear property, and actually moved it in, significantly in, from the township setback to meet the neighborhood setback. So, with that being said, we got full support from the association. We think that it certainly is a fine location, it's, no one's going to see it, it's, we got it fully screened, and this homeowner's putting a significant investment into their landscape. So, with that being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? I'll open this up to the public. Anyone like to comment on this item? Close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
With regard to the property located at 835 Harsdale Road, I would move to grant the permission request for the new shed, because the applicant has demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. The size of the shed is compatible with adjoining properties, and the use is appropriate for the neighborhood, and the location will not hinder or discourage the adjacent use of property. I would also move to grant the dimensional variance to allow the shed to be located in the side yard, because the applicant has demonstrated practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the unique shape of the lot, and there's no injustice to adjoining neighbors, because they've moved the shed to meet a lot of the concerns that were previously addressed by the neighbors. Again, unique circumstances are related to the property with the shape and size of that lot, and it's not self-created for the reasons stated above. If this is approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, all permits must be obtained prior to construction. Irreconciled plantings will be required to screen the shed from public view, and planting plus meter exceed the height of the shed at the time of installation for 12 months of the year.
Support. I have motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted. So calling Item Number 1, 1052 North Glengarry. Is the applicant ready?
Yes.
Item Number 1.
I would move to push this to the end of the agenda.
Support.
So a motion and support to move this to the end of the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item 1 is now at the end of the agenda. Calling Item 2, 1500 West Long Lake Road. Is the applicant ready?
Good evening, my name is Ryan Youngblood, I'm here to represent our client, Omar Hakani, at 1500 West Long Lake Road. As you can see on the screen here, what we are trying to do is install a four-foot fence that would run on the east property line and west property line in front of the home. The intent of the design is, I'm sorry, the fence is, most importantly, there was a significant lawsuit in long-term property line dispute, and our homeowner simply wants to put a clean end to that and make sure it doesn't happen again in the future. There's a line of trees that have been planted, but as you guys know, trees grow and die and change, so this would be aesthetically pleasing for board, horseboard fence, solid oak, as the picture shows right here, and it would run in the red lines that was shown out on the plan before. Again, it's on the east property line and the west property line. The goal is to paint it white to be aesthetically pleasing and matching with the estate property that it is.
Do we have any questions from the board? So I'll open this to the public, and anyone like to comment on this item? So, sir, if you could come to the microphone, state your name and address.
My name is Warren Brandis, and I'm here with my wife, Lisa Brandis. We live at 1492 West Long Lake, Bloomfield Hills. We live next to the Hakani's. We moved into 1492 in 1997 with our children. We've been living there ever since. When we moved in, the front yard was a combined front yard with the other three homes in the area that faced Long Lake Road. It was a park-like setting, kind of like a meadow. In fact, our combined driveway, in the old documents, was called Meadow Lane. Lisa and I are here today to protest their proposed putting a fence up on our combined property line. In the last year and a half, the Hakani's have placed densely packed, large 20 to 40-foot pine trees on the property line. By doing this, they've clearly delineated the property line. There is no logical, there's no logical person can dispute that these trees are directly on the property line. A fence, therefore, is unnecessary and inappropriate. If they put a fence on our driveway line, it will impede the use of the driveway. We won't be able to blacktop the driveway, which we do every few years. Snow plowing will be difficult. Driving a car and also delivery vehicles will have a difficult time. If they want to put this up, I heard, because of privacy, this fence offers absolutely no privacy to the property. The privacy that they have by putting these densely packed pine trees has given them the privacy that they want. This here is a picture of the driveway. You can see how densely packed the pine trees are, and they're actually hanging over on our driveway. Good night. Here's another example of the driveway. Can I have the other one? This is a picture of, this is a picture of their pine trees from our driveway to Long Lake Road. You can clearly see the demarcation of the property line. By placing a fence, the type of fence, or any fence in this area would be offensive to us, it would be disturbing our enjoyment of the property. The Hakani's in no way would see this fence. It would be on the opposite side of the trees that they can see. The fence would be objectionable to us and to our guests that may come and visit us. There is no, the fence offers no privacy and no security of any kind. Our homes face Long Lake Road, and it's easy to drive up any of the driveways and come to the houses. All of our homes have security for the home itself. The appearance of the fence, in our opinion, would not be in compliance with the Bloomfield Township policy of fences. It would simply be an eyesore and unnecessary and accomplish nothing that they would want to do. It is our opinion, the fence is not tasteful and does not enhance the property and is not harmonious with our communities, our architecture, landscape architecture. We therefore request that you deny this proposal.
May I ask you a question?
Yes.
What is that?
Whose fence is that?
Yeah, why do we look at you?
After the lawsuit that was referenced, that took three, over three years to settle, within days of settling the lawsuit, the Hakani's placed this fence, this is the fence that they want to put up, next to our home, our side yard. And it's extremely objectionable, it doesn't seem to go with the, our community in Bloomfield Hills, Bloomfield Township, and that's the type of fence. So we were forced to put vegetation on the opposite side. On the right-hand side is our home, on the left-hand side are the pine trees that they put up, and on top of that, they put this fence up, on the side yard.
There's an existing...
But these pine trees are different than the pine trees that are near your driveway?
No, they're the same ones.
Oh, okay.
Our driveway, this is our driveway, this fence comes up, as the driveway turns, the fence is right there.
But your house is to the right of this photo?
Yes, you can see our house
Okay.
...on the right side of the photo. On the left side is the pine trees, those huge pine trees that Hakani's...
Could we go to the aerial?
Yeah.
Photo, where we, because I want, and use the pointer to show us where this fence is, so we have the aerial photo with the red line on it.
So if you want to just press that button?
No, there was another...
You want the site plan?
The site plan, yeah.
With the red line?
Yeah. So where is, where is this fence?
Just, so just press and point.
I may be shaking a little bit, but the fence is right there.
Okay.
Right, right along the eastern side of those trees. These are those big pine trees, and the fence is right along there, our house is here, their house is obviously here. They want to put a fence right along here, and then all the way down to Long Lake Road.
And so, in your comments, you said the fence would impact snow removal and delivery, so you're...
If they continue the fence this way, it will impact our ability to enjoy the use of the driveway, for the reasons I stated.
So how wide is the driveway, approximately?
I don't know, I think it's about six feet.
No.
The driveway.
But the trees are right up to, his trees are right up to our driveway, where...
There's no place to put a fence.
There's no place to put a fence, and how could someone not move in if we weren't there and know where the property line was? It's really apparent. My driveway goes all the way around, his tree brought up to it.
The trees, the trees are right up against...
Where that red dotted line is.
The trees, you can see in the schematic here, the trees are right up against that red line. He wants to put a fence between the driveway and...
And that's obviously a side yard.
Let me finish. He wants to put a fence between the driveway and those trees, and then continue the fence down to Long Lake Road.
Well, it would be very difficult to screen the fence.
Yeah.
Why?
It would be difficult to screen the fence from public view, because there's no room for the screening, it's on the edge of the property.
Exactly, exactly.
Do we have any other questions from the board?
Just real quickly, I was kind of confused on the circular driveway issue. So you're, where the curve is, the property line curves in there for your driveway, is that it?
Yeah.
Okay, and so they're not proposing to cut off your driveway? I thought I read that they were going to actually put the fence across your driveway, that's not the intention, correct?
I don't think they intended that, but if they do, that's absolutely ridiculous.
All right.
But the fence that they put up was here, which is a side yard fence, and I don't even know if they got permission for that, but they did it because we went through a lawsuit and we were just traumatized, emotionally traumatized, and before we realized that there was a fence up there. And so, you know, we didn't want to get into another big argument with them, and so that's where it is now. But now, with this new thing that they want to do, they've just pushed it way too far.
Right, and we would have no way to shield it, and we barely have enough room to go around our driveway this first winter. If there's a lot of snow, we're going to have to be very careful with our snow removal if they don't hit his trees, let alone worry about a fence, which is unsightly, it doesn't fit in Bloomfield Hills.
It's an eyesore.
Based on the survey here, I might be misinterpreting this, but it does look like that curvature is your driveway on their property.
That's what we're trying to figure out.
And this, on the survey, it looks like, just, I'm just telling you what it looks like, they're proposing a fence to basically reclaim the driveway.
That's what it looks like to me.
Well, they can't do that, we have a variance, and it's been in existence for years.
When we moved in, we got that variance.
When we moved in, we had that variance, and we've been there almost 30 years.
The easement?
Do you have any easement?
Easement.
Easement.
I don't know the exact terms, but...
But the drawing is saying there's a fence that's going to go straight through.
Well, I think the red lines is what they want.
Well...
You can corroborate with Mr. Youngblood.
Right, so he'll get a chance to respond to your comments, so you just talk to us.
Yeah, so the red line is what I interpret is what they want, where they want to put a fence.
That's what I interpreted.
Not to block off the driveway, but just to encroach upon the driveway to the point that, I mean, it's, there's no room there, you saw the pine trees literally hanging over.
Any other questions? I think, I think we have a clear picture of the situation. Okay, thank you very much. Does anyone else like to speak on this item? So I'll close the public hearing and then have the representative of the homeowner come back and respond to the comments.
Yeah, thank you very much. So to answer some of the questions that were being presented there, the red line that circles that driveway is the fence. The property has an easement because of the misplacement of the driveway that they just spoke about, so the settlement included an easement where the driveway can therefore stay through... So the settlement included an easement where the driveway can therefore stay through our homeowner's property. That black line to the right of it is the actual physical property line minus the easement. The reason that the homeowner is so strongly for this fence is number one, to not create any more bad, bad relations with neighbors. That's not the intent whatsoever. In fact, it's the exact opposite. When he bought the property, there was a clear misunderstanding of where the property line was and what took place over years, over years of trees growing, property lines kind of just being diluted between friendly neighbors. And then he came in and purchased something and realized that what he thought he purchased was far less than what he purchased. And then spun into a multimillion dollar lawsuit that lasted about four years. So again, the main thing I want to communicate here is there's an easement there. That's what's, that's what's allowing that driveway, or that fence to turn like that. And the intent for the homeowner right now is to alleviate any future problems, not create future problems.
So in the survey here, who's, like, it might be worth pulling that up. The survey picture?
Aerial?
The survey, there's a survey.
That was submitted with the letter, that one?
No.
No. It's in the packet, it's this one that they, the neighbors submitted. He's looking for this.
Oh, okay.
It's the last document.
Uh huh. Yeah.
So what's, who's writing potential fence location here?
I've not written it before, so it's not me.
Okay.
That was an attachment to the letter that you received as part of your packet from the adjoining neighbors.
Yeah.
But you still can't screen that fence from the neighbor. Right, that's my, that was my point earlier.
Yeah, I guess I, I'm, I don't see any reason to grant a variance here, in my opinion. You went through litigation, there's been a determination on where the property line is. It seems to me that they've marked the property line pretty well with their plantings, and I just don't see any practical difficulty here that would justify putting a fence like this in that is so out of character with the community in that area.
Yeah, again, I'm just communicating the client's intent, is that?
I understand, but I'm telling you where I'm coming from. I just, I think, I think what it is, is pouring salt into a wound. That's what it looks like to me, okay?
Yeah, I think if you went through what they went through, you might think a little bit differently, but I understand what you're saying. It's, the reality is that this whole property line dispute started because trees were planted and then grown and died, and years go by, and there we have it. So again, the intent here, although it surface looks like it's trying to pour salt in the wound, it's the exact opposite.
Well, the whole thing about usually a fence, there's a reason for a fence. Usually it's privacy, it's security, it's the hole in the pet, it's sometimes for your children to feel. So I guess I'm not, I don't understand because you have such dense landscaping. So privacy you have, dense landscaping like that also leads to some sense of security. So I guess I'm not quite understanding the need for a fence, and especially on that side of the landscaping, not on the inside of the tree line.
Yeah, one of the other, you know, the intent for the fence that I have not brought up is because of the density of the trees and the growth factor of the trees, that the fence will actually hold everything at the property line as well, prevent, you know, limbs overgrowing onto the property line as well, so.
Well, you have limbs on the property line already.
It's actually not, that was a false statement.
Oh, okay.
Very false statement.
But we do require fences to be screened, particularly if you were going to put one in a front yard. It's impossible for you to do that. So you would have to put that fence, if we allowed you to do this fence, on the other side on their property, so that it was screened by those evergreens.
Yeah, and then it would defeat the purpose, so that, like.
Well, exactly.
I don't understand the purpose.
If the purpose is to.
The purpose, let me communicate that. The purpose is to delineate the exact property line, something that doesn't die and move, that's one. The other one is to hold back any limbs that continue to grow onto the neighbor's property. That's our two purposes.
So you want a fence to, to outline where the property line is?
Correct. Fences are typically used for that in a lot of cases.
Hasn't it already been identified where the property? So if someone were to purchase, they could get the, you know?
That's exactly what happened. It was a misunderstanding by several different engineers on a multimillion dollar estate purchase that took to a multimillion dollar lawsuit. So yeah, there's irons out there, but irons get buried, irons get moved, all kinds of stuff. So it's, again, the intent here is.
You're not supposed to move those irons, so.
Correct.
Okay, but no, I mean, you've got a lawsuit that determined where the property line is. That settles it. That's where the property line is. You've got that settlement agreement or court order or whatever resolved it for future reference. You don't need to put a fence up for that.
I guess the only thing I'll say, and, you know, it appears that maybe I'm having a differing opinion because usually we would require it to be screened. But I'm, what I'm hearing from you is that we had trees, that's what showed the property line, and then that's kind of what caused the problem because the trees get bigger, the land gets in, you know, whatever. There's all these different circumstances. And to my colleague's point, you know, yes, you have the court order, but I know as an attorney, a court order is nothing if it's not enforced. And to enforce it, you have to go to court, and that's going to cost money and.
Hundred percent.
Can go, you know, blow up the whole thing again. So I am having a hard time with this though because usually we would require it to be screened. But I do recognize in certain instances, and this appears to be one, I mean, if it became a multimillion dollar lawsuit, then obviously this was a very large property dispute. And I can see why they would want to have a fence indicating this is the property line because trees, somebody could say, oh, I thought that tree was on my property, and the tree is, you know, 10 feet in width, and now that's the 10 feet that you're litigating back in court. So I'll just add that to the discussion.
That is the exact intent.
However, you can, no, I'm not an attorney. However, it seems like you could put a fence, you could put a fence somewhere, and it can still not be on the property line. It could still be a dispute. So just because a fence is there.
That does happen, yeah.
Doesn't necessarily mean that it's showing.
You're still going to have to go back to the irons and the surveys that were done.
That's a great point. I think the intent there is that what took place over the years is that there was neighborly friendship, and the friendship kind of did one of these things. And that probably wouldn't have taken place if there was a fence saying, hey, this is my property, and we can still be friends, but you maintain here, we maintain from here. And the maintenance kind of grew over here, multiple years went by, a new homeowner comes in, our client buys a property, and then finally walked into a massive lawsuit, or misunderstanding. And again, he's just trying to, for his family and for all neighboring properties, whether it be who's living there now or who buys in the future, just kind of say, hey, we're going to be friends, but here is where our maintenance lines are, and here's where our understanding is.
Seems to me the trees make that pretty clear.
Yeah, and the irons as well.
Because it's close to the property line. And I have to compliment you, sir. You, you are, your whole delivery, your persona, your mannerism, just wonderful and as we have this discussion, so I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Doing a good job representing your, your client.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
So to me, if you can't screen it, we can't approve it. I recognize there's been a lawsuit and certainly difficult feelings resulted from it. And I agree with everybody else, there are other ways to mark a property line through irons, you know, stakes with the existing trees, the chance. I don't know what possibly could encroach. I, you know, the driveway's one thing, right? It looks like they got an easement for that. Maybe that's what caused the trust to erode, right? As they were upset that the driveway was on their property, but the solution is not this fence. And so I wouldn't vote to approve it. So is anybody else that can make a motion? That's, that's how I see it. Anyone else have any thoughts? I don't mean to stifle live discussion.
Oh, I see Jocelyn formulate.
Get right back and see it.
Okay.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking about it. Okay. All right, I will make a motion then if there are no other questions or discussion. In regards to the appeal at 1500 West Long Lake Road for variance for a fence, I move that the variance be denied as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did not demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would not be unduly burdensome because they actually do have a burial line that designates the property as well as privacy. There would be injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason that the, would not allow for screening. And if they did put a fence there, it would actually be an injustice for a variety of reasons for the adjoining neighbors in terms of snow removal, in terms of, you know, being on their property. No unique circumstances with the property have been given, and therefore this is self-created for the mere fact that they have already put a line of trees right on, very close to the property line, which leaves no room for screening, which doesn't leave a lot of room for a lot of different types of things that could help make this more palatable. So with that said.
That's it?
Oh, that's it. Because it's not up.
I have a motion in support. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I am opposed.
So you want to take a roll call vote, just?
Faqih?
No.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Gia Grande?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Rosati?
Yes.
Gittleman?
Yes.
Motion carries six to one.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Your request is denied. Calling the next item, item 3285 East Berkshire.
My name is Volodymyr Nissak. I live in Berkshire, 285. And I have coops for chicken and want to get vermeat. My coops stay middle on my backyard. My near side to my neighbor, close Torrey Fitz. Don't have roosters.
How many chickens do you have in the coop?
Ten.
Do you have any other questions from the board? So I'll open this up to the public. Is there anyone like to comment on this item?
My name is Albert Bell. I live at 2993 Aldgate in the township. And like this family, I have chickens. This board has approved in 2021 and have had them for several years since then and with, without issue. Certainly with a proper care of a chicken flock, they are not noisy, they're not smelly, they don't pose a health risk or an injustice to, to the neighbors. That is, that is important to note. People have been raising and keeping chickens for a very long time and that have been approved by this board before. And certainly every situation is independent. And that is why on Sunday I went and walked the property with, with the owners and went and saw from my own side for are their chickens in, in good condition in the, in the property. So I can certainly say with certainty, the hens are well cared for, nor is there a noise or odor problem. The size of their, their yard puts the coop exceedingly far from their neighbors and removes any perceived injustice from the neighbors for noise or odor or anything like that. It's just so far away and where they have their coop placed that perceived injustice is false on, from, from my opinion. I think it's also worth noting that the, their lot has frontage on, on two sides. So that is a unique situation that is not of their own, own doing. It's the property that has frontage on Berkshire and then that other street there. So they really don't have a backyard. They have two, two front yards and a, and a side yard. So that's certainly unique to their, their property and not of their own creation, nor is the fact that their, their yard is 1.7 acres. That was the situation when they bought the, the property and not in line with the, the 40 acre requirement that's in the, in the definition of, of the ordinances. So I think that's also worth noting. And the, the character of the coop, if you zoom in on the, the photo of the coop, the inner part is made with a child's play structure that is certainly congruent with a residential neighborhood that has kids playing in the yard. And the, the metal structure is also similar to anything that a gardener would place for their, their vegetables to protect them from, from birds and stuff like that. So I think if you, if you look at the requirements, there's not an injustice to their neighbors, that it's not of their own doing and that they're, they're using the yard in the best way that they, they see fit. So thank you.
So anyone else would like to speak on this item?
My name is Sedona Kellogg, 245 East Berkshire. We are their next door neighbors. We are the closest neighbors to the coop. We have no problem with it. There is no odor, there is no noise. And I see no reason for them to not have the coop or have the chickens. There's just no inconvenience to us. And as I said, we're the closest neighbors to them.
Do you get free eggs?
Yes, we do. And tomatoes from their garden. And they're just generally good people.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item?
My name's Darwin Spaseki. I live at 276 East Berkshire, directly across the street from him. We just moved into the house. We have a six-year-old who loves the chickens. I like the chickens. It's, there's no issues with it at all. I was surprised to hear that there was even an issue with it. So we like the chickens. I, I like everything about having them, and there's no issues with us for them. So I just wanted to say that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Thomas Strasser. I live at 1515 Winthrop, which is right there in the little corner. We ourselves had chickens, we just got rid of them all. So we have no issues with them having their chickens. I, they're great animals, they're, they're nice, they help keep bugs and stuff down. So they're, they're great animals. Plus, you benefit of getting eggs. So that's all I have to say about it.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to?
I just want to tell, it's.
Hold on just a second, I haven't closed the public hearing yet. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? I'll close the public hearing and let the, respond, you can speak now.
I keep this chicken, not just like my business or I want eggs. It's more educate for my kids. I have four kids now, it's two go away from house, two stay with me and school. Originally, I am from Ukraine. I was lived in, raised in village. We was his farm, it was chicken, duck, everything like this. And I was one time with my youngest kids in Ukraine. They were stayed there, they love it. They took pictures and to friend to America. And now, last year, my, my nephew, they run from war because you know the situation in Ukraine now. She bring five-year girl, she was stressful. She was try hiding under table, close curtain because it's, it's some bumping, you know? It's like this. And now she try go back to normal. She go in, she keep this chicken in the hand. It's like toy for her, it's like cat or pet, you know? It's, they like it. Neighbor across street and maybe two, yeah. After this neighbor also, it's boy, it's first grade. They come around and, and just looking like, like playing with them, you know? It, it just like this one. It's, I want to make for kids like some difference. They not be stay in computer or phone or watch TV. They spend all day on their backyard. It just point also like this one. Thank you.
Why, why the need for 10? Is there, because we. Yeah, so typically we see smaller number, two, two, three. Why, why 10?
Oh, I don't know why, because we buy black one, you know? And after we think, oh, maybe it'd be brown, it'd be better. But you know, it's maybe one year or two because we buy like big one, not like, you know, small. And I don't know how long they be. It's like this. If you want to reduce, I can put like, you know, give away couple and just be keep it like this.
We have more requests for chickens.
Right. I did just have one question on the Andrea, the existing coop view to the west. I just want to ask if that's there in that right hand corner, is that your house?
No, no, this.
That's the, oh, okay. Right here.
Near neighbor.
Yeah, okay. All righty.
Close to border Torrey Fitz.
Okay.
So to the west, it would be this house? That's that house, okay.
It's a house.
She's been. Okay.
In the property, we have so much like you see pine tree and it's go around from this one, yes. And this side we have small garden now. It's also like, you know.
Yeah, I'm actually, you know, we do this case by case. So even though they've been approved before, they've been denied in the past, you know, I've seen it all at this point. I actually don't have a problem with this. My only thing that I'm thinking is because you have a very kind neighbor who came here today, but she may leave, sell the house, someone else comes in and maybe they don't want to see it. So I'm just wondering if you would be able to put evergreen trees to maybe block some of that view.
But you know, it's was pine tree so much, but when they make what is called drain, water drain.
Storm, storm drain system.
Oh, they cut them down.
It's five or six pine tree died. And now we need pay money cut this one because you can go and see and the line you can ask them. Sometimes scary.
And my neighbor have same problem, pine trees died.
Uh huh, uh huh.
Between us, but it's was in the like borderline, you know? It's.
Not enough water and.
Yeah, no, I understand. And, you know, anyway, the the pine tree wouldn't be the kind of tree we would want anyway. It would have to be an evergreen tree, like something that's going to be green all year long. And the pine tree, obviously, you have the stem of the tree where it doesn't block things from view.
In like small one like?
Yeah. Well, I'm just curious what everybody else is thinking.
I put young apple tree because pine is died, I cut it and put it apple tree.
Okay.
And in the front also, we put small one. I don't know. It's not like pine tree, it's some different kind, but all all year are green. Like from from Berkshire, yes.
Do you think it needs additional screening?
I do.
Okay. Okay.
I think it could.
Any any other comments from the board or thoughts on the number of chickens, the structure? Well, we've we've kind of closed the public hearing, so I'd say.
I mean, it just because typically any really any accessory structure, so even a shed, you know, gazebo, hot tub, typically, you know, people in Bloomfield like having their large lots, the greenery everywhere. So we try to and and look, you know, I don't want to state the obvious, but there's reasons why everybody has to get permission for all these things and it's because the ordinances generally does not allow them. So, okay, I think I can make.
You ready to go?
Yeah.
By your way.
I'll start with the permission request at two eight five East Berkshire Road for the existing coop. I'm going to move that the accessory structure be approved as submitted based on the information presented. The applicant demonstrated compliance with section forty two dash seven point six standards because the accessory structure will not be objectionable to nearby residents by reason of the fact that there are no noise or smell complaints. And actually, we've heard from basically every neighbor and they're all in support of this request. I will also add that because we are going to require additional screening, it will not hinder or discourage the adjacent use of property because people will not be able to see it. So for the dimensional variance, because you have less than 40 acres with the chicken coop, I'm going to move that that also be approved as requested based on the information presented. The applicant demonstrated all of the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because while the while you're very short of the 40 acres that are required, you have nearly a two acre lot and you are able to keep it within setbacks. It is a sufficient distance from all of your neighbors and it is going to be screened from view. There is no injustice to adjoining neighbors because of the fact that it's going to be screened from view and it is within all of the township setbacks. There are unique circumstances with the property demonstrate, you know, given the fact that it is nearly a two acre lot, they have a large backyard and there is no objection from the neighbors. This is not self-created due to the reasons stated above. I will just add though, so you have 10 chickens now, I'm going to cap it at 10 chickens. So you wouldn't be allowed to have more than 10 chickens in the coop at a time. And I will also just add that all necessary permits should be made within five business days because it's already existing. And based on the discussion with the other members of the board, I am going to also require that you put additional, it will have to be evergreen trees, so not pine trees or fruit trees. It will have to be trees that are green from top to bottom. And they have to be tall enough to cover the the coop. And that's all I've got.
But my neighbor.
I know.
He is that.
I know, I know. I know.
I'll support the motion.
All right.
I know.
So we have a motion and support. Any discussion?
Supported.
I did.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you very much.
Calling item four, two oh four eight Del Rose Drive.
Good evening, everyone. My name's David Spence. I live at two zero four eight Del Rose Drive and I'm seeking approval for an existing gazebo that we had built in the in the backyard.
Does this require a setback variance or not? Okay, because there was.
It's just for the height, the extra foot, because it's placed on a raised patio. So from grade, it's slightly higher than 14 feet.
That was ruled after the application, is that it? Because there is information in here on a setback variance.
That must have been a misprint because the setback that he showed is adequate to meet the 16 foot setback.
I originally did and then we went and measured.
I just wanted to clarify that you did move it from the application.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions from the board? I'll open this up to the public. Is there anyone like to comment on this item?
Hi, my name is Kirk Branuck. I live at sixteen seventy two Hamilton Drive. I'm the president of the Square Lake Association. We're here tonight because Spences initially did not come in front of us. Had they come in front of us, we would have told them that they needed a variance. Plus, one of the things our association does is we ask the applicant to talk to every neighbor impacted. And that really weighs on our decision as an association whether or not we should approve it. They did not come to us. I did go to Mr. Spence. He was very cooperative. He has talked to every neighbor, I I think within 500 feet. Anybody behind, I know he's talked to. So we've talked to all the neighbors. I'm not aware of any neighbors being here tonight, but he has full approval from the neighbors and therefore our association has no problems with the current gazebo. It's a quality structure. I think he spent a lot of money, not that that matters, but it's probably a thirty to forty thousand dollar structure. It is on the patio, which is important, and he and he has moved it, I think, Mr. Rosati to take care of your concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else like to speak on this item? Closed public hearing and bring it back to the board for discussion or motion.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I'll start with the permission request first to approve in regards to the appeal at twenty forty eight Del Rose Drive for an accessory structure of a gazebo. I move that the request be approved as submitted based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate compliance with section forty two dash seven point six standards because the use of accessory structure is appropriate to the neighborhood as gazebos, pergolas and things of the sort are very appropriate in common. As for the dimensional variance, I also move that it be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome. It's basically removing it or making it shorter or whatever would prevent reasonable use of the accessory structure. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors. Greatly, the homeowner actually did go around and make sure that there was no injustices or neighbors didn't have any issues with the gazebo. The unique circumstances of the property, the existing floor plan, putting it on a raised platform just kind of made it a little bit higher. And because of that, it is not self-created. If approved, the motion also includes application for all necessary permits must be made within five business days because it's an existing gazebo. And I don't know about.
I think they indicated that they were going to put some additional plantings on the north side.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what it's in that picture.
All right, well, then I will also add that additional evergreen plantings will be required to screen the existing gazebo as stated and as as presented from public view. And the plantings must meet or exceed the height of the existing gazebo at the time of installation for 12 months of the year.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you very much.
Calling just item, item five, three six nine, Carroll, Berkshire.
Good evening. I'm Alex Bastow. I'm the homeowner at thirty six ninety Berkshire.
Could you summarize for us what you need and why?
Sure. So we're seeking approval for a four foot high fence. Because I'm on a corner lot of Berkshire and Losher, we technically have, we have a secondary frontage, so we don't really have a side yard to the east. So we're we're seeking approval to build a four foot high fence that encloses our backyard for the purpose of security. I've got one young child and one on the way, two boys. So we're just trying to close off the yard because we've got that busy road right there along Berkshire, or sorry, along Losher. That would be the the red section there to the left. And just to add a note, we, there already was when we purchased the the home and moved in earlier this year, there's like a five foot earth berm that exists, which would, yeah, you can see it on the left side of the picture there.
You want to use this?
Sure.
Yeah.
Absolutely. So if you can see.
You got to hold down.
Hold it down. Yes, ma'am. I know it's.
There you go.
I think their batteries are.
Here?
Okay, how hard do you got to press?
Very hard. You don't have a cat, do you?
Okay, there you go.
You must not be a cat owner.
I have one, unfortunately. So this right here, if you can see it vaguely, it's hard to see because it's all green, but that's about a five foot earth berm. And then beyond that, there is there's trees and probably about 30, 40 feet, a big storm ditch and then Losher Road. Yeah, so.
Because you're just screening it on the front?
Yeah, so actually, currently, there's no screening there. It's just a big empty lot, but the plan is yes to do planting in front. So, yeah, that would, from the front view is is here, you would see, so.
And the side view has the berm?
Yeah, so there's a berm and there's already.
Trees.
Yeah, big trees there. Several are dead and removed, but we're working with landscaping professionals to like fix that up because it was a little bit of an eyesore when we got it. So we're we're fixing it up over there. Yep.
Do we have any other questions from the board? I'll open this, go ahead.
Is this fence along the property line or, I mean, it looks like it's pretty close to it.
So on the, yeah, on the east side here, we're we're several feet back from the fence line. There's a, you can see them vaguely here, there's a power line, so there's an easement for that. And we're staying well clear of that because we don't want to obstruct the folks working on the power lines. And then there's also our property lines quite a bit over here. So I think we're we're inside on the west as well.
Do you mind putting the the view up, the layout and landscape plan, please? So are we talking about, what's the scope of work mean on the right side?
Yeah, so I think the this was done up by the the fencing company. So the scope of work would be, sorry.
So you're asking for a fence where all the lines are?
Yeah, so this one.
Does that not require a variance? Is that what?
I think what they were trying to highlight was like, if we went straight back from the the west corner, it wouldn't. And it's the red part that's in question. And so the the reason we didn't want to do the blue one is because it it cuts like half of our yard off and we'd have a bunch of dead space to mow and and maintain, but not really have for our children to use.
So it appears like, you know, your fence is pretty far forward. My next question is.
I'm not sure that line at the bottom there is a road.
It's not.
Yeah, we're quite a ways back.
It's proper. I know exactly.
Yeah, we're.
My next question is, how far off the lot line is it on that side that is described as scope of work?
Oh, sorry, this side?
This side?
The east side, yes. Because that back, the picture we were looking at, that black line says scope of work. And so you are putting a fence in there. And I think at the top there, it says six feet off of corner.
Yeah, I have to reference the documents submitted.
Sorry, I'm not, you know.
I think that, correct me if I'm wrong, but that particular fence, since it's not a dog enclosure, that's just a fence that's permitted.
I don't know what the coloring demarcation is. That came from the applicant and it sounds like it came from this fence contractor.
I don't think that requires a variance because it's not a dog enclosure. It's just a fence, correct?
Well, they are, they do have a dog. And so in instances, I.
But the dog's going to be in the part that's enclosed, correct? I mean, if you go back to the other one.
Yeah, that's.
The other one looks like that, see the blue and the red, is that going to be totally enclosed and that's the dog enclosure?
No.
I don't think the blue line is, I don't think the blue line's.
All right, okay. Blue line's not.
Then there are variances on both sides.
They're not building the blue fence.
Right. It was just a concept. I thought that they were putting that in and that would be the dog area.
Okay, so could you describe to the board the fence that you would like to install?
Yes, thank you for letting me clarify. The the red line on the on the left hand side of that image.
Okay, which image do you want is the west?
The one we were on here.
That one? Okay, because I have that confused a bit.
Okay, the 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 fence that we're requesting approval for is the red line, which is on the west side of the house, and then the black line, which is on the east. The blue line is, ignore that. That that was to show like.
Okay.
And the landscape plan is just the, all those trees are being added?
Along the rear, those are already there and mature. They're like 25 plus feet tall, I believe.
Do you have a plan to screen the fence? Do you mean I need to do that at four feet? So, yeah, do you have a plan to screen the fence?
Along, yeah, so there's partial screening now, which we're going to supplement. And then along this front here, we have plans to landscape all of that.
Does it have fence inside the berm or is it?
Yeah, I think there's a photo that demonstrates. So it's it's not.
It says uphill, which is a little concerning.
Yeah, it's it's not, so that that hill is long and sweeping. So it's not at like the very base because that would be like way over here. So it it starts to go up the hill and it's, I have to see if they said, yeah.
Oh, that's helpful.
There you go. So, yeah, so the the berm continues to go up and then there's screening to the left of this image.
But it's not screening on your property. Like, that's beyond your property, right? Because your property is where the red line is.
No, our property is on the far side of the berm.
That's where you.
Like probably 20 feet to the left of the.
Okay.
What is the hardship that you're having that you need a variance and that, you know, it seems like you could bring the fence in a little bit to encroach less on your setbacks? What's the hardship that you have to push it that far?
So just to make use of the of the yard that we own, wouldn't want, yeah, I leave it at that.
Well, I think what the mean.
So.
You have a nice sized backyard. Is there enough room to landscape on the outside of that fence?
On the outside of this fence here?
Well.
On which part of the yard?
It has to be landscaped from view, from your neighbors too. It has to be landscaped from view, from your neighbors too, so I'm talking about the black line as well as the red line. Essentially, it's the fences, fencing that you're installing.
Yeah, so on...
Needs to be landscaped from view.
Yep.
And you're encroaching quite a bit into your 16-foot setback on the north side.
So, across the north side, we're not building a fence, and there's already full, like 20-foot-tall arborides, so we can't see our rear neighbor at all, and we're not building a fence there. They have a fenced-in backyard, so we're not adding another fence to that, to have two fences in like a dead zone. And then on the east side, there's, I don't think we're encroaching, I'm not sure if we are, then we will screen.
It says 10 feet into the required 16-foot setback, which leads me to ask a question.
Okay, so, maybe I can clarify?
Oh, here we go.
Yeah, please.
Okay, so the intention is this is a dog enclosure. They're supposed to be 16 feet from the side lot line. They only have one side lot line. That is on the east, okay? That is their encroachment. They're asking to go, it says six feet from the lot line. So, if it says 16 into 16, it should be 10 into the 16 because it's a six-foot setback.
Yep.
The back, they're connecting, they're required to have a 25-foot setback because it's a dog enclosure. They're connecting, that's where you get the zero for 25, okay? See where they're connecting to the rear yard fence, okay? And then the other portion, the red part, that comes out to Losher, that's a variance because it's in a secondary frontage. Does that help?
And it says here, encroaches seven feet into the required 16-foot setback.
That part.
That's the part I'm confused about.
Okay, well, let's not, let's, yeah, just go with what I just said. Sorry for any confusion.
Oh, no, I'm just trying to get it straight.
Sure.
So, it's basically just that one setback?
I'm assuming the dog enclosure is just definitional for you folks because I own a dog. I'm not sure if you, there's like some implied use where I'm enclosing a dog back there.
Yes.
Yeah, a fence to contain a dog from going out into the street or attacking people, that's what I mean by that.
Yeah, that wouldn't be the use of this.
Okay.
So, I can't remember, I don't think I opened this to the public.
No, those are the questions that you asked us. Does anybody have questions?
Okay. Anyone, I opened the public hearing, does anyone like to comment on this item? There you go. Sorry about the delay in the public comment.
I'm Tim Mariski, I live at 3671, right across the street. So, I had no issue, Berkshire, sorry. I had no issues with the fence, just so everybody's...
Thank you. Thank you for your succinct comment.
My name is Mike Smith from 3571 Berkshire Drive, and I am co-chairman of the Westchester Village Architectural Control Committee, and I went to the homeowner's property and with him walked the perimeter of the yard where he wants to put the fence and didn't really have any, we don't really have any objection to the fence. The only question I have is, when I went to your house, I thought you mentioned something about...
So, you're supposed to talk to us?
Putting the fence along the north side also, and at one point it was going to jot out a little bit in there. That's what I thought you said. I mean, it makes no difference as far as our approval, but I just don't know if I misunderstood you or what as far as that was concerned.
So, could you rephrase the question for us so that we could ask it of the applicant? So, you're asking...
My understanding was when I walked the lot with him, is that along the north side, he was going to have a fence, but at one point, because of the vegetation, it was going to have to jot out a little bit and then continue on.
It's the corner there, I think.
Yeah, right there is where it was going to jut out and then go down the rest of the way.
Oh, so you thought it was going to be fully all the way around?
Yeah. Now, that was my understanding.
I guess.
So, I don't know if I misunderstood or if he's had a change of plans, but...
Well, does this red line clarify your question? Is that what you thought you were approving?
Well, I thought we were approving one all the way around.
Well, that...
But this picture doesn't show the red line on a portion of that north side right there.
There's an existing fence there though, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's why there's no red line there.
Yeah, but I thought he was putting another fence there anyway. I say, maybe it's my misunderstanding, but...
So, does that help you?
The homeowners' association does approve...
Okay.
The project.
All right, we'll get him to clarify that. Thank you so much. Anyone else like to comment on this? I'll close the public hearing and then bring it back to the homeowner just to maybe confirm and hook it into the existing fence.
Correct, yes, so I think, yep, what he's referring to is that north side there where it comes through and then out, because there is no fence there currently, that would be like the front yard of the rear neighbor's house, and this is the only plan we've had. It's submitted this way to the HOA as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Can we...
Do you think six feet's enough to plant landscaping?
What's, I'm sorry?
Do you think six feet is enough to plant landscaping?
I would think so.
I mean, yeah, I think so. Are we right with this? We've approved others with five feet in, I think.
Get in the field.
Do we have any other questions?
Is any, we have low energy, I know, could we rally with a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, thank you.
I'll start with the permission request first. In regards to the appeal at 3690 Berkshire Drive for the accessory structure of a fence, I move that the request be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the use of the accessory structure is appropriate to the neighborhood as such fences are appropriate especially for children and dogs, especially since it's going to be screened. In terms of the dimensional variance, I also move that that be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because without the fence, obviously, he wouldn't be able to contain his dog and then also his children, which he would like to keep secure because he lives on a busy street. No injustice to the adjoining neighbors. The association actually gave their approval. They don't have any problems with it. Adjacent neighbors have also expressed their approval and that there's no injustice to them, and also because it will be screened as the applicant has stated. Unique circumstances of the property, multiple fringes are unique circumstances also adding to this burden, and because of that, it is not self-created. If approved, the motion also includes application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. And additional evergreen plantings shall be required to screen the fence from public view, and plantings must meet or exceed the height of the fence at the time of installation, and they must remain green for 12 months of the year.
I have a motion in support, any discussion? All who are in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
Calling item 62872, Whittier.
Hi, I'm Mike Sloan, and I'm here on behalf of my clients Scott and Kristen Whitfield. I'm here seeking approval for a hot tub and a fireplace. The hot tub is placed up on the patio, on a raised patio, and the fireplace will be placed on a lower portion of the patio. The hot tub is eight by eight. It's really not the exact picture because that one's going to be a square one, but and there'll be a locking cover like was requested by the city, and the fireplace is five foot wide, three foot deep, and a foot tall. Just requesting permission for that.
Do you have a landscape plan?
Yeah.
Pardon me?
A landscape plan for this to be screened? Like, do you have a landscape plan to show if these structures...
Yes, yes, I do.
Can you talk about it?
Sure.
Or show us?
I have one, I submitted.
Okay, I didn't see it.
While you're looking for that, how come the generator's not screened?
There's one right here. It's not small.
Sorry, I have not... Oh, I think it is on the original, I'm sorry. So, this is really, I mean...
Yeah.
How about this is that?
That's crazy.
I'm sorry, that should have been in there.
Okay.
On the patio, it'll be...
I need a pointer?
Yeah.
Just hold it.
Now, the, if you can't tell, the hot tub will be right here up on the patio, and there's a 36-inch like wall retaining the back part, which would be part of like a seating bar, to be like right here, and...
So, this is, this whole plan is going to be built? These new patios and the sidewalk around and then all these plantings?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that the plan?
Correct.
Okay. Where is the generator on this? It looks like possibly you are going to get some screening around the generator in this plan?
Yeah.
Is that the generator right there that I'm looking at?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Yeah. Okay. Let's do the public hearing.
And the yard is completely covered with greenery and trees, shrubs, all the way around the perimeter of the property. I don't know if you have any more questions for me?
So, I'll open this to the public. Anyone like to speak on this item? Close the public hearing, bring it back for further discussion or motion?
I'll make a motion here.
Thank you.
So, this is going to be for, just, I'm sorry, remind me what number this is?
Number six.
Okay, so 2872 Whittier Drive for the permission request. I'm going to move that the hot tub and fireplace be approved as submitted. The applicant demonstrated compliance with Section 42DR 7.6 standards because these accessory structures are common in the township. They are going to be within the setbacks, so they will not hinder or discourage the use of adjacent property, and as we've discussed, they will be screened from public view 12 months out of the year with evergreen screenings. So, I'll add that your permit should be made within one year and obtained prior to construction, and I just have to reiterate that there will have to be screening 12 months out of the year for the fireplace and the hot tub. Evergreens, they have to be as tall as the structure at the time of planting.
Okay, all right.
Motion in support, any discussion? All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, we're calling item 7, 3880, oh, no, I'm, 3880 Oak Hills Drive.
Hi, I'm Matt Mosier again, representing the homeowners at 3880 Oak Hills. This request is for a small sports court in the rear yard of this new home. Everything is within 16 feet of the setbacks. The property's going to be extremely well-screened with evergreens all the way around. Request is fairly straightforward, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I thought, I can't remember, when I looked at the pictures, I thought there were a couple of gaps, like right there.
Well, we're putting all new trees.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, all the trees on the landscape plan are all brand-new.
Okay.
Yep. So, the dotted circles are existing, the other ones are new.
Gotcha.
And I assume that the fence exceeding four feet in height is due to the sports court for the...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't bring that up. So, we usually always, you know, kind of come with six feet. It's that see-through mesh, it's not that, you know, obtrusive look, and plus it's screening anyway, you won't see it from the outside.
You worked with the association?
The homeowner said they spoke with the association, didn't get any feedback, positive or negative, so it's what I know.
We do have a letter that actually speaks a little bit more directly to that question. You might want to read that. Yeah, it looks like they...
I didn't see that.
As determined.
I think we're unaware.
Yeah. Maybe let's open public comment.
Any other questions? So, I'll open this to the public. Anyone like to comment on this item?
Okay.
My name's Paul Terrell at 3875 Oakland Drive. My property is adjacent to this. I'm on the north side. The new homeowner has built this big, beautiful home that towers, but I, you know, it's all been under regulations. I guess through talking to all the neighbors, they had a variance and moved that home back four feet. When they, when the property was originally was Mr. Lamb's, he had sold it, the landscape, APAP sold the property to a builder. Another builder came along and built this house. This is a very huge home towering in my backyard, and I've allowed that to be pushed back four feet, and now they have a built-in pool, and now they want a sports court. And from what I was told, the fence is supposed to be six foot in height, not four foot in height, but with, you know, with, they have a driveway. I mean, my sons are 25 and 23. I've lived there for 23 years. We had no problem playing basketball in the driveway. I know things have changed. I'm an older man now, but this property, if you ever walked it, this is as tight as it could be, and this is going to be quite allowed, quite allowed for our, my wife and my, my wife and myself living there because this is going to be, they're going to play pickleball, I presume, or whatever they're going to do, but it's, it's a very tight, tight backyard. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Does anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Just come up to the microphone, give us your name and address.
Carol Hurtiggin, 3839 Oak Hills. I object to this because we have a very narrow street. When kids come to play, the street is going to be tied up with traffic, noise, and I'm sure they're going to have lights. I just completely object to any more construction on our narrow street with kids coming in with their cars playing and the noise. I totally object to this, and also the fence.
Thank you. Is anyone else who'd like to speak on this item?
Hi, good evening. I live on Oak Hills, but I live four houses down.
Address?
And your name? Oh, I'm sorry, Penny Wilcox.
And your address?
Oh, sorry, 3805 Oak Hills.
Thank you.
The problem is our bylaws. I've been in my home 50 years, so the bylaws have always said you cannot put a fence higher than four feet, and also it said you cannot put a fence totally around your home. So, they violated the, they want to violate the four foot that has been in our bylaws for years, well over 50 years, and they want to put six foot. So, that's what I'm against, and several other neighbors that are near us. So, that's it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who'd like to comment on this item?
Just one question.
So, I can't do that, yep.
My name is Jane Williams. I'm at 3865 Oak Hills, right across the street. My question is, where is this fence going to go? Is it in the backyard? Is it the side yard? Where is this fence going?
It fences the sports court.
It just goes around the sports court. It's not, it's not in the yard.
It just goes through the backyard?
No, no, it just, it just prevents balls from rolling out into the yard.
So, it's that, just the sports court?
Yeah, and it's like a mesh netting. It's not an actual hard fence.
Okay, and will they have any other fences on that property?
No.
No.
Okay, thank you.
They need a pool fence. They have to have a pool fence.
All right, well, that's not in front of us now. So, I'm sorry, is there, you would like to comment on this too? Okay, so you could just give us your name and address.
I'm Sandy Jeffries. I live right across the street, 3875. I've written letters after letters about the ditches. I've got water running across the street in my yard... I've got water running across the street in my yard. They don't have to have a fence around the pool?
I'm sorry, I didn't realize there was a pool, they would have to have a fence around the pool.
So that's two fences?
Well, that's, that's not in front of us today, we're just talking about the sports court.
Well, but you said there's only going to be one fence.
Well, I was incorrect when I said that because tonight we're only talking about the sports court.
That's a building code requirement around a pool.
Yeah. Okay. Any, so, not, so I'm going to close the public hearing and then have the applicant respond.
Thank you, yeah, you know, I'm obviously in the position all the time of trying to come up with plans that appease the client and the neighborhood. And, you know, fortunately in this area, I've done a number of projects and I think a pretty good job with, you know, not causing trouble. And one thing we look at is, you know, as much as I advocate for my clients, I, I, I'm cut from a cloth that I care about other people too. And I know these people don't, don't want this stuff. But, you know, unfortunately times change. There's nothing in this that is outside of the ordinance, these are very common throughout the community. If the six-foot fence is a big deal around the court, even though you absolutely will not see it because of the evergreens, we're happy to go to four feet. It's not, not a big deal. In terms of the play on this court, whether it's, whether it's grass or court, kids are going to be playing. This is a small court, pickleball courts thirty by sixty, this is seventeen feet wide by whatever. So this is a small court for these kids to play. You know, I, I think a lot of the comments are, I respect them, they're valid. But we, we do a good job, I think, on, on all of our projects to, you know, try to really be respectful of the neighbors while giving our clients the things that they, they want. And there's just nothing here that would be out of the ordinary for so many of these courts that we've gotten approved in the township, even though every case is individual. So with that being said, I'll, I'll answer any questions you have, but I, you know, we're not asking for anything outside of the setbacks. You know, really always trying to work with the township, the neighborhoods and everybody else to do things that are pleasing, both aesthetically and functionally.
Question, there's no illumination, correct?
No, we, we know that, there's never illumination on the courts in the township.
Sure, okay.
You just, you just offered to reduce the height of the fence to four feet.
Yeah.
I, I have a question for you. What good will a four-foot fence do?
Let's see.
I, I mean.
It's, it's something to keep the ball, I mean, it's.
Okay, all right.
A little mesh fence.
Honestly, you came in lower than what we feel.
Listen, I've gotten ten feet approved from you guys, we're trying to be reasonable.
Exactly, exactly. Typically, these are ten feet.
I typically don't do this, but I'm sorry, what is your question?
He's talking about kids.
Okay. All right, well, that, all right. So I've closed the public hearing, so any other discussion from the board?
I mean, if it's approved, I, I think six feet, I mean, maybe that's going to be better because it will protect the ball more.
That's what it seems like to me.
And if it's not going to be screened, I mean, the bigger question is if we're going to approve the court, but I don't think that the height of the fence is, is an issue.
I guess I, if, I'm prepared to try a motion here if you'd like. Okay, with respect to the property located at three eight eight zero Oak Hills Drive, I would move to grant the permission request for the requested sports court and fence because the applicant has demonstrated compliance with section forty-two dash seven point six standards. The size of the accessory uses is compatible. And I would point out that this is a small sports court in comparison to what we typically see for sports courts. And the fence too is, is not as high as what we typically see for sports courts. So an effort has been made to reduce the scope of this for the neighborhood. The use is appropriate for the neighborhood and the location is appropriate. You are meeting the setback requirements with this. I would also move to grant the dimensional variance for the fence exceeding six feet in height because the applicant has demonstrated practical difficulty. Again, this is a sports court, some kind of fence is required to contain the balls within there. I think the six-foot request is very reasonable. Like I said, we typically see ten, ten-foot requests for things like that. In addition, this, this court is going to be totally screened by evergreens planted around the perimeter of the property. The applicant has demonstrated practical difficulty for those reasons and it's not self-created. If approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. The evergreen plantings will be required to be installed to shield the sports court from public view. Meter exceed the height of this fence, which we know you're going to be much higher. What's the height of your trees?
Ten to twelve feet.
That's what I figured. And, and they must remain green twelve months of the year. No illumination will be permitted on the sports court and the use of the sports court is limited to daytime hours.
Support. I have a motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Your request is granted.
Thank you.
So, the board?
You are free to file a lawsuit as a homeowners association to enforce your bylaws. We only enforce the township ordinances, we only apply the township ordinances. Those are private contracts that you have that we are, we do not enforce. We just granted a variance, okay? We granted a variance to allow.
We grant variances to the zoning ordinance.
Okay, and then one more question. Our street is only a car and a half wide. So when all the kids come in the door, there are going to be cars way up on the rest, camp in the driveways because it's only a car and a half wide.
Those kids can do that without a sports court.
And don't you have.
They can come and hang out in that backyard all day long, okay? They can drive their cars over to that house and as many kids as they want can go over to that house, just like anybody else's house. So those are not things that are factors that we consider. Okay, we're.
So I'm, I'm sorry. I think we'll have to end the sort of back, we typically don't continue discussion after we voted on something. So you'd have to discuss that with your own attorney or your, your own representative. All right, just calling the next item.
Hello, my name is Dan Smith, representing the homeowner at three one one five Franklin Road, seeking a variance for retaining wall on the north side of the driveway there and then as well on the south side of the home, a temporary encroachment into the natural feature setback. Zoom in to.
So if you wanted to show retain walls, I didn't get the, I didn't get the mesh reason drafted.
So if you notice on, is there anyone who can zoom in? I have a larger one if you want to.
Um, I can zoom in.
Just up to the driveway side if you could, around there.
The cat?
All right. Uh, maybe one more.
Ooh, I don't know if I can.
Oh, that's fine.
Now you're pushing the technology.
So if you note here, this pink line, and then it continues here, this dotted line, this is our natural feature setback because there's a wetland in this area here. We have a twenty-five foot natural feature setback line. So our hands are kind of tied as far as needing a height variance on this retaining wall here. We would space it out for the eight feet apart, which is your, your minimum distance to where a wall will be considered. One retaining wall if you have several sets. So we do have three sets of retaining wall there. You'll see there's one, it's kind of hard to see on the pink line right here. There's one retaining wall there. There is a second one there, and then there's another one right at the edge of the asphalt driveway. In combination, all three of them are around ten feet. The first one is about two feet, the second tiers, second two tiers are at four feet. And then on the south side of the property here, we're not asking for a variance. This is more so just a temporary encroachment on the natural feature setback line here. There's a retaining wall starting about here, carrying through and ending here. Then again, this is just a request to have an encroachment temporarily into the natural feature setback line here. You can see this dashed line here as well, which is our natural feature setback line. There is another wetland here, it's kind of holding us at that twenty-five foot setback line. So once that is completed, we will not be, you know, encroaching past that line. It's just more so to have a temporary, grant us a temporary access to, to work in that area. Any questions, if you have any comments?
So I just have two questions. One, so Patty, for the permission request, that is so that they can have the temporary working in the natural feature setback, okay? It's actually a variance, I apologize. Okay. So it's just a variance?
Yes.
And my question to you is how temporary? I understand there might be contingencies when you start work, but how long do you think it might take?
So the construction has started on the home, contingent on the, the approval from the Z V A of the retaining walls, we were able to start construction. Most likely will be probably end of next summer, I would estimate probably fall. Fall of next year, we'll be installing the retaining walls.
Okay. And will, and, and you'll only be encroaching while you're building the retaining walls?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so how long do you think, because the reason why they started laughing when we saw this is because I'm very opposed to any encroachments in the natural feature setback.
Of course.
So really what I'm trying to get at is how long are you going to be actually affecting the natural feature?
Oh, I don't have an exact estimate. If I had a guess, I would say probably a month, month and a half at the very most.
Okay.
We'll try to be as quick as possible, obviously as minimally invasive as possible, not damage any of the, the trees or any of the greenery in there. We just, it would be more so foot traffic, we're not going to run a machine down in there. But it's, you know, if we have to drop off a couple pallets of brick and then walk around and set them on the retaining wall, that would be about the extent of the work in the natural feature setback.
Thanks.
Any other questions from the board? I'll open this up to the public for comment, anyone would like to comment on this item? I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
I actually, so what, you need the retaining walls because?
So due to our site conditions here, if you'll see the topographic change here, we lose about ten feet in elevation in this short distance here. It's a very hilly site. I don't know if you could, I don't know if the pictures would do any justice of that.
Oops, great.
It's more so to hold the edge of the driveway there because of the, the site conditions.
So structurally, you.
Exactly, yes. If you go back maybe two, one.
Okay, so these are the pictures that have this one?
Okay, go to the next. You can kind of see, it's, the picture's kind of on an angle, but it's. It's exaggerating it, but it is.
That's very clever, that.
I didn't put it on the slide.
We can tell because the tree isn't standing straight up.
That's good.
I guess the only other question I would have for Patty is could we, and I don't want to make anybody's, you know, job harder, but I'm just curious, could we put a time limit on the encroachment? Like they can only encroach for three months, for example?
You could, but clearly you want to make sure that they're able to complete the job and do it adequately. And then they'll restore the area that's impacted.
Okay. All right.
Maybe you can just use the word reasonable, reasonable amount of time?
Yes.
Reasonable and necessary?
I don't think we did.
I think we did. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Well, with regard to the permission request at.
Variance.
Okay, only the variance, excuse me, with regard to the appeal at three one one five Franklin Road, for the variance, I move the variance be approved as requested based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance being duly burdensome due to the severe topography of the lot. Further, there is no injustice to adjoining neighbors by reason that this is not affecting any other neighbors and it's the orientation of the home on the lot. Unique circumstances of property have been demonstrated, again, given the sloping topography, and this is not self-created. So if approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits to be made within one year for the proposed retaining wall and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. Additional evergreen plantings may be required to screen the retaining walls from public view and plantings must meet or exceed the height of the retaining walls at the time of installation for twelve months of the year.
Support.
I have a motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
So calling item nine, seven oh seven oh Wing Lake Road.
Yeah, hi, my name's Michael Rhodes. I'm the property owner of this, this house. I'm here to request a variance for a six-foot fence to secure the backyard, to contain two agility dogs that would jump a four-foot fence and to push out the herds of deer that have taken advantage of this lot for the last fifty years. So we're the property owners, I've been in here fifty years taking care of this place. I moved my daughter in here and it's sort of like a field in the middle of the forest here. The entire lot is landscaped. So did you pull the satellite view or? Not the, a good one, the one I.
That's all I got, I'm sorry.
That's all you got.
You mean you want the one that you submitted?
Yeah, yeah. I had to knock down about a three seventy-foot maples that were encroaching on the roof of the house and, and encroaching into the foundation of the house, I had to move them out. So I just cleared out the back lot. And that's, that's sort of a view from the rear pointing south. I only have two neighbors that would be impacted that would see any, yeah, there you go. The one with the circle. Well, I had my PowerPoint already.
Yeah, you brought your pointer.
I brought my, I brought my industrial strength laser pointer.
Wrong way.
Thank you. I've been sitting too long, the bladder's getting, oh, you can't see anything. Anyway, if you had a good. Oh, there you go.
Oh, there we go.
Yeah, look at that, all right. So what do you see?
Trees.
Nothing but trees.
With a giant circle around.
All right, the satellite imagery hasn't caught up. I've knocked down all these trees. You can see, well, maybe you can't see, but half of the roof was covered by these trees. When I knocked them down, the following day, we had a snowstorm, that tree would have nailed the roof. So I'm saving the property, I've kept the property. It was my parents, they passed away fourteen and ten years ago respectively. I'm moving my daughter in here from California, keeping it in the, in the house, in the, in the family, so another generation of us. And I'd like to get some utility out of this property other than me just spending thousands of dollars trimming and cutting down trees, you know, every, every other year. The deer are everywhere, everywhere. And I don't know if any of you drove by this house, any, anybody? No?
I know.
Yeah, okay. I only have two neighbors to the south and to the east, west, east, west, sorry. Up here, this is about a forty, forty-foot elevation over here. Nobody can see this property. Maybe in the wintertime they'll be able to see over the fence, right? But anything is an improvement what's been there over the last thirty years, right? And I've been taking care of this religiously. When you're coming out of this subdivision over here, which was a horse farm thirty years ago, all they see are trees. To this, to the south, trees, trees, nothing but trees. So I don't know what viewpoints you need. The other part of the variance is the offset is about eleven and a half feet at its closest point to the property line.
Oops, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Whatever that guy was, wanted to, could do a ten-foot fence, I'll take a ten-foot fence. All right, just kidding. This is the proposed construction, all right? White pine, white pine all around, two gates. This is my preferred arbor, you know, hydranias. With all the trees that I have, I don't, I don't know that I could tolerate planting yet another tree, evergreen or otherwise. The whole property has spruces and walnuts and maple, everything. So I'm thinking, the only part of the fence that is visible for a millisecond from the sidewalk is on the north side, north side. This side, right here. So this is sort of the proposal, this is the house, it's an eighteen hundred and eighty-two square foot home, ranch on a slab. Fifty years ago, there was a fence back there and a pool, but I had the joy of filling that pool in when it collapsed fifty years ago. So that was my summer exercise back at the time. The neighbor on this side and the neighbor on this side, they have no, no issue with this at all because they can't see anything anyway. They might be able to see a little bit in the wintertime when some of the foliage drops. All right, so that's the essence of the request. So I think I told you or somebody that the offset was six foot, it's actually eleven and a half feet.
Oh, okay.
Eleven and a half feet from the closest point. You can see this, this property line is at an angle, so it's twelve and a half feet here. I have a wellhead here, so I want to fence the wellhead inside, I want to fence that inside the fence because I may have to drill another well. So I presume that might take another permit? Question? Yes?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm not going to ask for any more permits today. So that's the essence of the request. And I'm not part of any homeowners association. 50 years ago, we were gratuitously part of the directory for the Orchard Valley subdivision. We fell off of that because we are considered attractive land and not part of the subdivision. So the house next to me is a 150-year-old farmhouse. Great neighbors that I've had in the past and currently. They don't have a problem with this, and the family behind me, they don't have a problem with it. And up on the hill, they can't see anything anyway. And so, I don't know, I'm the elder in the area, right? And I do my best, I can carve out weeds to make them look good from the street with a weed whacker. Go ahead.
Are you proposing, are you putting in a pool as well at one point?
That's another, no. I'm not planning on excavating that.
Any other questions from the board? I'll open this to the public. Anyone like to speak on this item?
My name is Cindy Norian. I live at 7151 Paterese. Our property is maybe kitty corner to Mike's property. I submitted an email with my concerns and they are with regard to the sight lines, not S-I-T-E, but S-I-G-H-D. Walking down Wing Lake Road in front of Mike's property, you can see beyond his house, especially in the winter when the foliage is not as dense. And I assumed that the fencing was going to be across the top of his driveway, extending from his house. As he said, he's not in our subdivision, he's not part of any association. Our association likes clean sight lines. We don't have fencing that is privacy fencing. We have, don't have cyclone fencing. We have that wrought iron type black looking stuff. And I understand with two dogs, that's not going to be tall enough to contain agility dogs. So I assumed it was going to be privacy fencing as in the picture. My concern was having the privacy fencing across the head of the driveway, interfering with the sight, and possibly letting the dogs hear activity on the street, which is a pretty busy street, and barking. I don't know anything about the dogs, they may be quiet, they may be well-mannered, but having the dogs accessible to noise from the street rather than having the fence directly behind the house, that was a concern. And that's all I have to say.
Cindy?
Thank you very much.
So it's been the last 50 years.
We've lived in the neighborhood as long as Mike has.
Yeah.
So you, I'm sorry, you need to talk to us and then?
Well, I haven't seen her in 50 years.
Great. I'm glad zoning board meetings can bring neighbors together.
Well, we wanted to end on a happy note.
Okay, so hold on, does anyone else would like to speak on this item? Okay, so I'll close the public hearing. Did you respond to anything that your long-lost neighbor said?
Yeah, well, I don't know, there's two dogs right behind you, so. Do you have a picture of my dogs?
Yep, we saw the dogs. Great picture.
Oh, you see them, all right, so that's for scale. You know, my daughter trains these dogs, does agility, equestrian, all kinds of things, animal-related. One dog herds sheep, the other one herds reindeer, right? The little big dog moves, doesn't bark, moves, moves like a cow. And so I don't think you're going to hear much because of all the foliage that I have. You see the trees behind me, right? Hundreds of them, you know, these gigantic spruces. There were twice as many 50 years ago, half as tall. And I've been pretty religious about maintaining the property, right? So I don't think you're going to be hearing dogs. And as far as the driveway, the view, the view now from the street is pretty awful because of the way what's behind this house. You know, it's been vacant for 15 years. And, you know, I've just had an estate sale to clean it up, and I'm putting in paint and all that kind of stuff to make it habitable. It was a custom home in 1965 when it was built. So there's really no remodeling. As much as I'd love to knock it down and put up, you know, a million and a half dollar home, not in my foreseeable future. So I'm going to maintain the integrity of the property and certainly be respectful of all my neighbors, even ones I haven't seen forever. Although I did meet you on the driveway, out in the street. But there are dogs everywhere. I mean, people are walking dogs all over the place. So I understand the noise consideration. I don't know what you can see from where you're living, where you're at, but not much, right? No, you can't, I barely see.
Again, you got to address your comments to us, you know.
Well, hey, you know, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That would be afterwards. You can, you can have a really cup of coffee or whatever, but you're
Arm wrestling or whatever, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, okay.
Let me, let me, so are you having, are you having the fence go all the way around the property? Or is it just in the rear?
All right, here's the house, right? This is just behind the house. This is sticking out eight foot to the north of the house, and this is about 12 feet to the south of the house. So the property line's out here, Cindy lives over here, right?
But you're going, it's now, it's 11 and a half feet instead of 10, is that right?
This point here is 11 and a half feet from this property line.
Is there any reason why you can't move that in another?
I need to be able to get a vehicle into this backyard.
Oh, so the encroachment's actually less?
Correct.
Encroachment's out five feet.
So really, the only thing that can be seen is this side of the fence when you're walking the sidewalk for about five seconds, right? Even when you're driving down Wing Lake, and if you've been down Wing Lake between 15 and 14, I'm the first house on the right as you come down the hill. So eventually I'm going to want a hidden driveway sign as well as a deer crossing sign. And I've done my best to keep the deer away from your property because they've taken, yeah, all right. Believe it or not, I'm sorry to look to my right. All right, I tried to be concise.
Okay, you added a lot of color to your presentation. Any other questions? So I live on Wing Lake, I've walked past your property, and I do think that you could see, as you said, the fence, is there anything to screen it from public view on Wing Lake Road? Anything that you could put up?
Well, I have plenty of pictures here, you had something from the street?
You have a?
That's what I have.
Well, I can put up anything, you know. Listen, after 50 years, I understand the aesthetics of the area, right? I remember this was all farmland, right? 50 years ago, and that ordinance was put into place before, even before 50 years, I can understand the need for a four-foot fence because it was open, it was all, it was an apple orchard.
So I got it, I just want to know if you can screen the fence?
Yeah, I can do whatever you want.
Okay, that's a good answer.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
Okay, you ready to make a motion then about the request? You'll do anything we ask?
Most anything. Can I get some chickens while I'm at it?
But we're reasonable, so.
Yeah, all right.
We'll make it reasonable and equitable.
Well, if you live, which side of Wing Lake are you on? North of Maple or south?
I'm just north a 14-mile, I'm on that little private drive that's, I'm on the east side.
I'll make a motion.
My house is 120 years old.
Oh, okay.
I'd like to bring to the board's attention, as you know, fences, that if they do have a finished side, it has to be facing the neighbors. So if this is your design, the finished side of the fence has to face the neighbors.
Exterior.
Right, right.
Side, okay.
Can I add that to the motion?
I can't understand the aesthetics of the fence until I put it in, so.
Okay, I'll make a motion, yeah.
We want to help you.
Second?
Sure.
You just have to make a motion.
Okay, yeah, I'll make a motion.
Great.
In regard to the appeal at 7070 Wing Lake Road for the accessory, or for the proposed dog enclosure fence, I move the request to be approved as submitted based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-76 standards because the accessory structure shall be harmonious to the neighborhood given the wood fence selection and the screening plans. Dimensional variance for, in regard to the appeal at 7070 Wing Lake Road for the proposed dog enclosure fence encroaching five and a half feet or?
Up to six feet?
Up to six feet into the required 16-foot setback and 1.8 feet into the required 25-feet rear yard setback. I move the variance to be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because it would not permit a safe space for the dogs to play or be outside. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of aesthetically, you know, harmonious fence with a screening plan. Unique circumstance with the property have been demonstrated given the the wellhead wanting to be within the fencing for any kind of future maintenance or drilling. And this is not self-created due to the reasons listed above. If approved, the motion, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year for the proposed dog fence, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. From a screening standpoint, I think we're saying the fence needs to be screened from public view. So evergreen plantings will be required to screen the fence from public view, and plantings must meet or exceed the height of the fence at time of installation, and the finished side of the fence must face the neighbor's side.
Thank you. Support.
I have a motion and support. Any discussion? All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request.
Thank you, I look forward to seeing you.
Okay, great. I'll bring my dog. So calling item 10. 3671 Berkshire.
You made it, you're back again?
Good evening.
Oh, we thought you came as a partner neighbor.
I did too.
But that's great, it's two for one.
Tim Marshke, I live at 3671 Berkshire Drive. We are looking to basically three variances, dimensional variances. The front porch, the garage, and back patio. We do live on a quarter lot, as you can see, from West Bradford and Berkshire Drive. I think we're only asking for two feet for the front, two feet for the garage, and two feet for the covered patio. And I believe when we did our architectural, we can still see that my, my existing garage right now is not meeting the setbacks. It's beyond the setbacks as it is now. So being a corner lot sort of makes it difficult to even do additions, not unless we go up. And we really don't want to go up because we like our ranch. Normally, they take this house and sort of crunch it and build a big monster one in our neighborhood, and we don't want that. So those are the variances that I'm asking for, and hopefully they'll be approved. I know I did go to majority of all my neighbors within, I think I went eight, nine letters that I do have for approval. And Mike is also here from our HOA for approval too.
Any questions from the board? Open this to public for comment.
Alex Basto, 3690 Berkshire. Just wanted to voice my support and say I was shown a copy of the plans and enthusiastically support. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mike Smith from 3571 Berkshire Drive, co-chairman of the Westchester Village Architectural Control Committee. When the Architectural Control Committee first received the application along with the drawing renditions, we had some reservations about this project. Although I will say that the homeowner has made previous home improvements on the ranch, which have greatly improved the appearance, excuse me, of the house. But we did have some reservations on this project. If you go back to that picture, that, that one, yeah. Our reservation was that with the drawings that we got here of those garage doors, it looked like all the panels of the garage doors were glass, which go against our criteria in our subdivision. So, and I mean, I and several members of the committee were talking about this and looking at it, and we just said, no. But then I went down and talked to the homeowner and met him and talked to him and found out that this was just the artist's rendition of what they were going to do and was not, in reality, what they were going to do. In reality, he's already got the double garage door, and it's got the metal panels all the way across, up and down. So the new garage door is going to be the same way, metal panels all the way across, up and down. So you won't have all this window space where you can be looking into the garage and seeing junk that they've got in the garage and that type of thing. It's going to be just a normal, typical garage door. And once we found that that was the case, we approved the project then.
So you're good with it?
I'm good with it.
Thanks so much.
Okay.
So anyone else like to speak on this? Close the public hearing, bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
With regard to the appeal at 3671 Berkshire Drive for the dimensional variance, I approve the variance to be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome due to that this lot is a corner lot. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason that it's consistent with other homes in the area. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated given, again, that there are multiple frontages, and all of this is not self-created. So if approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits to be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction.
Support.
So I have a motion and support. Any discussion? All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
So do we usually get something in the mail, I guess?
You can give me a call tomorrow, give me questions, all our department.
All right, we'll be ready.
Yeah, did you already apply for your permit?
We had not yet, we didn't want to go through anything until.
That'll be your next step then.
Thank you.
So calling item 114190 Telegraph.
Hi, Brian Townsley from Tower Group, 804 East Grand River Hall, Michigan, representing Andover Realty Group and RSM Management. Here for them today to try and get this fence approved. Just to say real quickly why we're asking for the fence to go here is it's, we have a fairly major safety hazard with kids racing through the parking lot, going to school. I've personally been on the site where cars have been going 40 miles an hour through the parking lot. We do a lot of construction work for the owner on a lot of their properties and in this building, and we've witnessed that. So they want to put up a gate very similar to what is on the school property, exactly that, next door, that would be, you know, chained, closed, whatever is required by the fire department just to not allow traffic through unless emergency. None of the tenants in the building go that way through the property, the trash receptacles on that side, so people have to cross that drive. So for the owner, it's a safety hazard that they're trying to prevent.
Makes sense, you're near a high school and kids cut through, they're going to get to class or going to get out of class, so.
Well, they're trying to avoid the intersections.
Avoid the intersection, faster.
The way to get through it, so just trying to cut off that.
Any questions from the board? I'll open it up to the public. Close the public hearing, bring it back for a motion.
I can make a motion.
Thank you.
So with regard to the appeal at 4190 Telegraph Road, I will start with the permission request for the proposed gate. I will move that that be approved as requested. The applicant demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the use of the accessory structure is appropriate for this pool and will actually enhance safety for the neighborhood. With regard to, and obviously enhancing safety does not hinder or discourage the use of anybody's adjacent properties. For the dimensional variance at this 4190 Telegraph Road, again, for the proposed gate in the front yard, I'm going to move that that also be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant demonstrated all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because there is a safety and security hazard without the gate. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that only the people that need to access the property will have the access to the property. And again, this is enhanced safety and security for the neighborhood and And again, this is enhanced safety and security for the neighborhood and the students at the school. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, given its location on Telegraph Road and what the property address is. This is not a...this is not a home. And this is not self-created due to the reasons stated above. I will just add that all necessary permits should be made within one year and obtained prior to construction.
Motion in support. Any discussion? All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted. So, we have the item number one that we had postponed to the end of the...
Usually, it seems that Kathy Wisenborn makes a comment, and it doesn't appear that they...
So, what happened with this is that they slightly changed their dimensions of their fireplace, so they're going to be going to the next village meeting, and we found it acceptable to present it as a permission request, knowing that Kathy responded that she probably will be going before their board. So, with that information, I have that to share with you. I'm suspecting that possibly the homeowner thought that maybe they couldn't come back until after village approval. So, I just want to share that with you, that Kathy has reached out and stated that she doesn't have necessarily an issue with it. It's just she...they slightly changed the dimension, so it has to go back to the board. This is only a permission request, so it's up to the board's determination.
It's usually made and it's wood.
And it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, this is easy.
It's a wood fireplace, and which is usually different than what is usually approved there.
I can make a motion.
Nice.
Okay, regards to the...
Wait a minute, let me...
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. So, it opens up to the public. Anyone like to pop in and comment on this? So, closed public hearing, and now we can...
Okay, in regards to the appeal at 1052 Glengarry Road, for the accessory structure,